Leading to order, everyone will stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Lucy, will you call the roll please?
Ginger Shane?
Here.
Deanna's wires?
Here.
Frankie Schwartz?
Here.
Rich Barton?
Here.
Carolyn Sprague?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to amend or adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our board norms are written down there and I think we've been doing a pretty good job of sticking to those and I'm proud of all of us for that. And that brings us to recognitions already.
Yes, so our first one is Black Hawk Middle School. Yeah. For being named. Warren County's Reader's Choice, they do a campaign every year to determine the best of different categories and one of the categories was best school and in all of Warren County, not just Warren County R3, the whole county, so we're talking Martha'sville, Wright City, us, private schools, public schools. Number one numero, the best school in all Warren County is Black Hawk Middle School. For your Warren County Reader's Choice. Now, it's here, Rick, record to help celebrate.
That's you, you're supposed to take that, what is going on Rachel? Okay.
All right, and to continue on with the theme, we have the, in all of Warren County again, another account, another category was preschool and so the best preschool is Hopewell Early Childhood. So, you ready? Hopewell. Really is a great honor, really proud of you guys that have such support and great job, so way to go.
Lucy, do we have any patron comments?
No.
Okay. We are ready for superintendent reports and our first one is student health services.
Yes, and we have our lead nurse, life partner.
Hi. Okay. So, is that working?
Yeah, they'll just.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, we have a new nurse this year at Warrior Ridge, Jeannie, she started in October. She was replacing Ashley. Everyone else that we have is back from last year. So, we have a lot of experience in our nurses' offices. With me and Carrie being, being here the longest. So. Daniel Boone, they see 2,479 kids so far this year, which is thirteen percent of 0.4% of their students a day. Rebecca Boone is seeing 2,320 students so far with 9.4 students seen per day. And Warrior Ridge is seeing 2,100 students so far this year with 7.6% of their students seen a day. And Black Hawk has 3,209 visits so far with 8.2% of their students seen per day. And the high school has 2,324 visits so far with 4.2% of their students seen per day. And early childhood is in the rear with 93 visits, 93 visits, 2.6 other students seen per day. My students are the ones that don't want to go home. Care days, we have seen almost 100 students so far, which about averages to 11 students per day. Daily medications, those have kind of increased with, some of our elementary schools have increased but some have gone down when they've sent kids on to middle school and high school. We do currently have six diabetics in our school district. So, those kind of keep our nurses pretty busy. And our student needs, healthcare needs, asthma has increased in all of our schools and so has ADHD. ADHD actually went from 225 students last year to 341 this year. I'm not sure if that's because of the new charting and, and Infinite Campus and if people are more familiar with it and able to put things in compared to last year when it was new or if it's really that trend that those numbers have gone out that much. Those are things we've been looking at. And then our anxiety has also gone from 121 to 165, which kind of, that does not surprise me because we see more and more kids that are, have anxious, anxiousness and anxiety attacks at school than we used to see. And then we're still doing our Land of Smiles dental program where they come and teach our kindergarten through third graders about dental hygiene, those that they come to the elementary schools. Big Smiles Dentals continuing to do dental visits in our, all of our schools except for early childhood and we're getting ready to do vision and hearing screenings in the, in the spring. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
One thing was on the immunization compliance, are, how do the exemptions work? Are you telling parents that they have that option or?
So, we encourage, as a public nurse, health nurse, we encourage all of our students to get immunizations. Now, if a parent says that they don't want immunizations or they have a reason why they don't get them, then we say, of course you have parental consent, parental exemption option if they're in preschool or a religious exemption if they're in elementary to high school. The parental exemption has to be renewed annually until they go to kindergarten and that's just one time until they need other shots that aren't, might not be on that exemption, so.
And then with the increase in ADHD, is there any PPE that we're giving to teachers to help support them and what these kids may, what would benefit them in the classroom at all? Or, you know, like PPE for like?
I'm thinking PPE is like five, like gloves and gowns and things like that, that's what PPE is to me.
Professional assault, but.
Yeah. P D. Oh, P D, okay. That, not from the nurses.
Okay.
We have not done that, so that's usually more the SPED department, they've put those things into place and if they're on 504s or an IVP, that would be them, not necessarily us. We may attend those meetings if they're using nursing services or medications or something else but we don't attend all those things unless nursing needs to be involved. You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance?
All right, this is our normal one, which is looking not normal.
Not normal?
It's got a green slide on it. Okay, let's see what we got, all right, so we got a green slide, so maybe not. Let's see if we can pull it back up here again. We did practice this this afternoon.
We did, it works.
Yeah, that was all good. Dilution's been kind of interesting on the way they load PowerPoints and not PowerPoints.
It seems like it's shrinking it all over the corner tonight.
Yeah, so we're still. Okay, well, it's not there. This is the green slide. We'll come back to it here. So, I'm not sure what that is. So, this is our normal beginning point, we were just talking about revenues and expenses and where we are compared to last year and revenues are ahead compared to last year. Again, the big player that we've talked about every month is the extra early childhood special education payment we got July, so that's put our revenues ahead. Expenses are also trending just about a percent ahead, not drastic there. And fund balances are a little bit down compared to last year as well. And so, here's our chart of fund balances, as you can see, we're just down a little bit compared to where we were at this point last year. Where the, the orange line is this year's fund balance. Revenues, revenue locally is up, that's a little bit proxy, we haven't received any of our taxes, we've all paid our taxes, I'm sure by now, but it has not, hasn't hit our account yet. So, that'll be next, hopefully we'll get our first check here in December. But they did go out a little bit later this year, so I anticipate December's payment to be a little bit lower. So, I'd imagine if we go back to our graph here, that our fund balances will actually dip a little lower than they were last year, because last year we saw a slight increase but just because the bills went out a little bit later, I'm not anticipating seeing much this, in December. We'll probably get a bigger jump in January than we saw in the year before, so it just kind of depend on that cash flow works. So, anyway, so back to expenses here, so, or revenues, so county is up a little bit, the state is up a lot and again, that's the early childhood special education payment and then federal is a little bit behind from where we were. So, we're up, we're up about 1.2 million dollars more this year than we had last year at this time and that really is the, for the most part, the early childhood special education payment, which was exactly 1.2 million dollars, so all the math works out. So, expenses, we are salaries, we gave raises, so salaries and benefits are going to be higher as expected. Purchase services are up as well and supplies are about, a little bit higher. So, anyway, that's our, our total expenses through this time, we're up about 1.4 million dollars than we were last year at this time. So, our fund balance projections, our ending fund balance for capital projects are at 1.3 million right now, which is good and that number will jump up again once we receive our taxes here in the next couple of months. And our bond issue money we actually have in the bank for spending on bond issue is 8.8 million at this point. So, that's kind of where the finances are today.
All right, thank you. And then you have an update for us on the board candidate filings?
Yes, so board candidate filings opened on Tuesday and we have one candidate signed up so far, Mr. Keith Harbison. So, Keith has, has signed up, thanks Keith for doing that, really appreciate it. And then closing ends on December 31st at 5 o'clock.
All right, next comes the consent agenda, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thanks, Rich.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. In old business, we have that whole list of policy approvals, so I hope you guys have done your homework. Does anybody have any questions or want to discuss any of those? They're all MSBA recommendations, right?
The last one is a kind of combination of MSBA and us is, the last one just adds language that non-medical personnel are prohibited from recommending medicine to parents. It's something we do, is just.
Right.
Want to put it in writing.
Right. Okay. Dee, did you pre-freeze everything?
Yeah.
You usually do that, I kind of depend on that, so any questions, any discussion?
So, what's the consequence of KKAP, AP1 and the second, second to last one there about the conduct of the conduct of district property with other influence? Do we just ask them to leave?
Yeah, they would be asked to leave, potentially not to return, but essentially just says they're prohibited from doing, having, using marijuana on campus. But I'm, I'm sure it'd be, in first offense would be.
Right.
You can't do that, get out of here and then, but if they come back, keep them in, you're done.
Yeah. Very good. I'll make a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion as second to approve the policies as presented. Anybody have any discussion or other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
On the JHCD, should we also address not sharing with students? On the medications, like tell him or the child to be on the medication?
It says with parents, you could add with students if you wanted, with parents and students?
And students.
You could add and parents in there.
So, like there's no personnel telling the student if they would like them on a medication or not?
Okay.
I don't think that that should happen. But it would just, parents and students?
Yeah.
Okay.
Parents or students maybe?
Yes.
And, what is it, or, does it matter, or?
I don't know.
Or's probably right.
I'm looking for where it's got, district may share medical concern, district staff may share medical concerns regarding students with parents but will not recommend medications unless they are employed as a nurse or other medically trained staff. So, will not recommend medications to parents or students unless they are employed.
That sounds great, that's as clear as day, I guess.
Sure, so, so the medication, so I think it just says, yeah, this would be explicit to who we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Anything else? Okay. Rich, would you like to just make that emotion, that motion again?
Yeah.
And we'll accept it as amended, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the parties as, as amended, except for the last one that we amended.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the policies as they stand now with that one amendment. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, thank you. That was kind of a lot, lot of material, so I appreciate you guys spending time, good. I lost my place, sorry, it takes me a while to scroll down. And that was all we had in old business, correct? So, now we're ready to talk about course guides.
Yep, course guides, so we'll talk about Black Hawk Middle School first. You know, the main change there is probably, the biggest change is probably going to be our, how we handle industrial tech and our ag courses. So, as you know, we've struggled to hire industrial tech teachers and have someone in there, you know, full-time for a while now and so I thought this was a real creative solution, I thought it was an awesome job by Black Hawk to come up with this. So, what we're going to do is basically combine our ag courses and industrial tech and, and now offer that to sixth grade and seventh grade, because right now ag's just offered to eighth grade. And so, it would be an ag slash industrial tech course that they'd have in, in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, so kids have opportunities of a little, their whole middle school career to get into ag, not, and, and IT, not just their, in eighth grade.
Right.
So, so I thought it was a really great solution to, to problem we've had and great opportunity to expand some programming too. So, that, that's kind of the big change there at the middle school, then also allowing seventh and eighth grade to have their co, their election courses together, so instead of just eighth grade, just seventh grade, allowing more flexibility in the schedule, kids could take more different courses. So, teachers might do some differentiating in their classrooms potentially, if somebody's had it twice, but that's probably going to be minimal, I would imagine, but it does give more opportunities for kids to take more courses. So, that's, I think, pretty, pretty good. The high school, kind of jumping down to the high school, the big change is there really is just kind of dropping some courses that kids haven't taken in a while and then also switching the leadership class to just a broadcast class. As we've seen the popularity of the broadcast and I've had several students reach out to me wanting to be part of this, I do think that there's a lot of opportunity there for kids to do some of that, so that's kind of highlights. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Going, going back to the middle school for just a minute, then we would hire someone to teach career classes to fill in?
Correct.
That.
So, fill that spot.
Because our ag teacher has been doing part career and part ag.
Correct, so instead of hiring an industrial tech person, we would hire someone to do careers and then we'll have someone, then there'll be some other electives, probably adaptive PE, things like that for special education students.
And our, and our current ag teacher is okay with this plan? Because I think I see her sitting over there, I just couldn't help but ask, but I know you said you had.
Sure.
Said she, she had a, you had, someone had had a conversation about that.
Thanks for being a team player, we appreciate you guys.
Yes, yes, we do appreciate that, because that's a, that's a tough, it's just a tough role to fill, so, okay. Anybody else have questions? Or comments about anything? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the course guides as presented. I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the course guides as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And that brings us to the audit.
Okay, so here's our audit and we always ask our auditors to find things in our accounting processes that we can do better at and they found some, which is not always what you want to hear but, you know, we, we do appreciate them communicating in some ways to get better. We'll start with things, so there's things called just findings, which are really a problem and like, well, that's really not good and you need to get better at that or at least be able to, you know, get the information. And then there's the, the management comments, the management comments aren't as bad and are fixable and are, and we might even have fixed them already. So, I'd like to kind of just go through the management comments first, then come to the finding on, on, on that. So, the management comment is the last one there, just kind of walk through what's happened, what's been reported to us and how we're addressing it. So, the first ones, there's deficiency one and two, these relate to the special education funding, the final expenditure report, we had some issues getting that submitted during this audited period. And this is last year we were talking about and because of that, it forced us to put the money in a different spot than we normally would, because we weren't really sure where to put it because it kind of messed up our years and which made us have an ASBR correction to get it all correct. And because of that, it was after the audit and so that just kind of messed everything up, but it did get corrected. So, putting the money in the wrong spot, well, we just, was just a holding place. We put it in cash and it really should have gone to a different spot, so we probably should have notified our auditors right away and that's just not something we did, but it has been corrected and it's all good now. It's just, you know, the accounting practice wasn't as sound as it could be in, in that process. But anyway, we were able to get that fixed. But those, those first two go together, I don't anticipate that, we've worked pretty hard with the DESI and our special education department or our finance department to kind of make sure we understand the FER for SPED now and I really am not anticipating that issue going forward. The other one was, number three, was really strange when the auditors caught this, we didn't, we didn't realize this was happening. So, in federal funds, we would do a payment request for Title I, II and IV. Now, let's say we put a request in for a hundred thousand dollars, we would get a payment back for a hundred thousand dollars and we thought, oh, great, got our money and put it in our accounts where we requested it. But looking deeper into those requests, let's say we request 50,000 for Title I, 25,000 for Title II and 25,000 for Title IV, what would come back to us was 40,000 in Title IV, you know, 30,000 in Title II or 30,000 and so that it didn't match what we requested, but we got our total number back. So, the, the numbers, every, every request we got, the, a dollar amount was exactly the same but the buckets that they were reporting it to us.
Total dollar amount was the same.
Were different and, and so we didn't even really hardly even, because we got requests matched, everything matched, we're like, all right, we're good, move forward, but as the auditors were digging into this, they're like, this is weird. And so, it really was from DESI coming to us in a strange fashion, so we'll just be monitoring that closer and like, that was really, really odd, but all the money, all the, everything matched up perfect and everything was good there. Four, okay, four is transportation, so last year if you remember, I'm going to talk about that in just a second, but last year if you remember, we had an issue with being, our transportation, just the way we recorded students on account day. Now, what we've found is that we're just not reporting students that are under a mile. So, we don't get paid on students that are under a mile and so we just didn't worry about it too much, but we need to be reporting that, so that's easy for us to do, easy fix. It doesn't impact funding in any way, it's just something we need to do, yep.
And I'm sorry, those students under a mile but who ride a bus?
Correct, ride a bus.
Because it's not safe for them to walk from where they live, is that?
Right, right, so our policies, or special education students for example.
Oh, right, right.
There might be some special transportation.
Okay.
But there, there's a, if you have to cross highway over 40 miles an hour, then we transport. So, there's some students that are inside a mile that can't, basically 47, it's down by compass, there's a few, few kids that do that, so we just have to report that and so that's something we'll be doing. And then the last one, as you, as you know, we had payroll issues for, during this, during this period and there's just some things that get reported incorrectly, so there's been some personnel changes there and I'm very confident that we will not have that problem anymore. But that, that's what the deficiencies were and then to kind of go over last year's where we had an issue with recording, that was cleaned up, our transportation department did a great job with that, so we're glad to get that cleaned up. And then next year, where we moved to our new program, where we have better software for our bus drivers, they'll have a tablet on board that will just do recording right as kids are coming on, so that'll be really clean and really easy, so. So, we cleaned up last year's issues, identified some others this year, but I feel like we're in a good spot for that one and I'm not anticipating any further problems with that. So, that's, that's the stuff that's not great, areas we can improve. So, before we jump into the finding, any questions on this part? Okay, moving to the finding, so the finding is identified on the, let's see, the Warren County draft audit and we probably could have kept pushing and trying to figure a way to do this, but we have to have an audit approved by December 31st, so we really just were running out of time and we needed to get it approved, essentially denied without having to have a special board meeting. And, and we'll continue to work on this for, for last year and continue to get it done. So, at the very last page, so it's page 39 in the manual, but 46 on the screen. Not sure how that works out, but it does. So, this talks about the finding here. So, what happened is last year we switched to Infinite Campus, as you can remember, and we previously, so this all came from food service and so previously we recorded our free reduced lunch numbers off of paper applications. Last year was the first time we moved to digital applications and Infinite Campus has this extremely secure, which is a good thing, because this is one of the most sensitive pieces of information we have and so really the only person that should have access to it is really our food service department. And so, we were able to get reports and get numbers, but we were not able to verify those numbers through a report through Infinite Campus and so.
The way the audit.
The way the auditors are wanting it done, right, so, so the auditors, so we had 197 kids on verification day and we're like, oh, great, here's 197, this is where we got this number and the report we pulled from, you know, this is where it is. And the auditors are like, okay, we need to see the kids and the names with that. We're like, well, don't, can't really find that, what about parents' names? So, we're like, that, and then, well, can we match that to applications, signatures? And we're like, not, no, you know, we don't, those reports just don't exist in the program. And so, we've been working with Infinite Campus to try to find what the auditors are looking for, but they've taken a couple, three, four days to get back to us and every time there's a question, there's new questions that come up and it's just been, we just haven't had, had it done on time. And so, that creates a finding because we're not able to verify the verification numbers. So, that, that creates a problem with the, with the audit for us. So, we will be working on this and working with Infinite Campus and we are not the only district in this situation, so we've, we've been reaching out to other districts, hey, we So, uh, we've, we've been reaching out to other districts, like, hey, what are you doing? How's it, and, and everybody's just kinda in a, in a spot, so?
That was my question.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, from the legality standpoint, they, the auditors should understand that the sensitive information is not just readily out there by?
Right, sure, but at the same time, though, they wanna be able to verify that we're not reporting false numbers.
Right.
And we've manipulated the system in some ways, so?
Cause that, they've seen that happen in other districts.
Yeah, I'd assume, and they're doing a good job, like, that's their job, is to make sure that this is, where no fraudulent activity happening. And, and we weren't able to produce the reports that verified that we weren't doing that. And we're not, well, obviously, we're not doing anything. Well, absolutely, a hundred percent, yeah, it's, it's just that we weren't able to produce the reports needed. And so, uh, not great, uh, nobody's happy about that, but it's not also the end of the world. Like, we'll be able to figure this out eventually, and it's just that we can't do it right now. And we have to have an audit approved by the thirty-first. So, I just told them, let's just write up it as a finding, and they were working with us, they were very graceful toward all this. But I just said, hey, let's write up for finding, we'll, we'll continue to work on this. And what this means is this, this will have to be audited next year. So, typically in an audit, they pick one thing, audit it, get a clean report, then don't do it for, they skip a year and then come back. This will have to come back next year to Food Service to be audited again. Uh, so, it's just a matter of being able to find the reports and pull the information that they need. So, that's where that is.
Okay. Any questions? Do everybody understands what's going on and? That, you know, the reporting is, or being able to access the information they want in the report is the issue.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the audit as presented.
Okay. All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve the audit as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We have no policy for streets?
Nope, not this month.
Brings us down to miscellaneous. Rich, you have celebrations?
I've been out of town.
You've been out, you have celebrations, you have to go to Germany, my goodness.
But I will say that I was, as I was sitting in my hotel room in Germany, watching all the pictures of the snow here on that night, on that day, and watching the community pull together, and, uh, come together to get that game off, and what a memory those kids will have for the rest of their life. And, and it's just so cool. Not surprising that our community pulls together like that, cause that's what we do. And, uh, but I was just, even from four or five thousand miles away, I was so proud, and, uh, it was that time, and I was over there watching it and cheering from the bed, but, uh, it was cool. Thanks to everybody that was a part of that, too.
I think we have to celebrate the, the football team and our coaching staff and, and everybody who was in on all of that, because it's not every year that you get that far in the state tournament, or even to the state tournament. So, um, I'm just really proud of everybody, and I know, I know the guys would've loved to have go, gone to the finals, but, you know, they, they still need to hold their heads up and be proud. Cause we are all proud of them.
You know, I like celebrate the city on their, their hometown Christmas parade they had. That was packed, we had a lot of our students down there enjoying that, and that was really great to see the community come together like that. That was a big event a couple of weeks ago, and that was great. Was that just last week?
Sounds like me saying?
Yeah, but it's great to see so many kids out there enjoying it, having a good time, it's great.
And I, I wanna give a shout out to Kelly here, I mean, uh, I just see Kelly everywhere. Cover, covering events for the paper. She's fantastic, she's so approachable to talk to, and, uh, she does a great job. And it's much appreciated if she's here at every board meeting, which I know is so exciting. Heck, I don't know, I'd quit teaching years ago and got on this board, but, uh? But anyway, thank you for all you do for our community, and you've been a, a very, uh, great addition to our community and what you do for our paper and so forth, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to set the next regular meeting.
That is not my job.
It's not your job.
I'll make a motion to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
It's a good thing you're here. You seconded it, okay. We have a motion as second to set the next regular board meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And then, we need closed session.
I make a motion to set the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the session on January ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second. Thank you, Ginger. Motion's been made and seconded to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the next regular board meeting on January ninth. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes, and I need a motion to adjourn. That's you.
Yeah.
Don't move.
Okay. And there's a second, motion as second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And we are adjourned, please, everybody.